Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, January 27, 2020, and we are in committee meetings tonight. Tonight, we have a little bit different order in that we'll have the Transportation Committee first because we do have some people of whom we may have questions and rather than have them wait the whole evening or if they have additional information to add about the street closings that we'll be discussing, then we'll be able to call on them. Thank you. Chair Kotzis.
Yes, President Nisley, thank you. And so, yes, tonight, we're kicking off the street closure season. And a little bit earlier, I feel like we're starting to approach some of these closures and start talking about them sooner than later as most of them start to happen in the spring through the summer. Also, administration has been working hard on getting grouping a series of closures together at the same time. So tonight, we're going to be talking about four different street closures. Okay, actually, there, I see them on the agenda. It's the International Street Fair, the Cruisin's that are by the Plains Lions Club, Ohio Brewery Week, and Bounty on the Bricks. And so, I'm going to, I made some notes, and because on our drives, we have the forms that all of the promoters have gone through and filled out, so you can actually refer to those for additional information. But the International Street Fair is the first street closure that we're going to have uptown, and that is on Saturday, April 4. Closure time is going to be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And this is East Union Street from Court Street to Church Street. And Church Street, of course, is the little street that goes past, oh, the Medical Center. Help me out, university people.
By Triceline.
Yes, Triceline, yes, and goes down to the School of Music. This closure does force the, also, the closure of College from Washington, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, College from Washington to Union will also have to be closed during this time. So that's 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the 4th of April. There will also be a parade that will start at Baker Center, and we'll come up to East Union to start it off, so you might encounter at one particular moment slightly, a little bit of a stall there. The second closures that we have to discuss are the Plains Lions Club. They're doing their three dates for their Cruisin', which is called the Oldies Bash on the Bricks. These are Friday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And they're all, so all Friday evenings, it's May 29, July 31, and September 11. This closure is Court Street from Washington to State. So no, you won't have that much disruption of vehicular traffic on this one as they're not closing down any intersections. The Plains Lions Club did note on their form, because the fire chief always asks that the fire lane is going to be maintained down the center of the street. The next one, next series up, is that Ohio Brewery Week will be having their two Saturday closures. This is Saturday, the 11th, and, I'm sorry, Saturday, July 11th, and Saturday, July 18th. And the first one, on the 11th, that is for the First Call event, that is from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. It is West State between Court and Congress, so in between, by the Casa Tonys and some of those establishments right there. The closure will be a little bit, little bit up the street so that access, egress is still allowed into the alley parking area that goes in behind Tonys. That second one, the Last Call, on Saturday, July 18th, doing a 12:00 p.m. to a 12:00 a.m. Now, that is the, I think I may have written that down incorrectly, in that, on the forums, they have when the event starts, but then they ask for additional time for closure. Oh, you got it? Okay. Okay, yeah, so set up and break down. On the 18th, that's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:50 p.m. And so, that will be, that is a larger closure, and that is Court Street from Washington to Carpenter, and then that'll also then include a closure on West State from College to Congress. Now, I will note that with the Ohio Brewery, these are the same requested closures that they had as of last year. And the final one that we have in this bundle is the Bounty on the Bricks. This is, of course, Ohio Health fundraiser for the Southeast Ohio Food Bank, and that is on Saturday, August 1, with an 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. closure of Court Street between Union and Washington. Once again, not impacting any intersections, but an all-day closure of Court Street. So those are kind of the overview of these. We do have, some of the promoters are present this evening, so I don't know if anybody has any specific questions for any specific event. Yes?
And did I understand that the initial meeting was the people who will be, who are in charge of these different closures, and then also the Uptown Business Association? Was there a representative there?
There was, yes, yes. So they were, they were present for that discussion, and I would say that many, most, not all of the promoters were there. And this would actually be a good time for me to check with administration. I know that from that sheet that we received last week, we have most of the, we had almost all of the dates pinned down for all of the events except for Boogie on the Bricks. And so, have you, have you had any contact with them? I know that there had been some attempt.
I have not.
Okay.
Keep trying.
Okay, yeah, so.
Once you hear from Boogie, the people related to Boogie on the Bricks, is that kind of it, or would there still be an Arts and Music Festival possible?
This is just kind of the first few that we were able to bundle together, so no, Arts and Music Festival is on there. And I don't know if that sheet, no, I have an electronic version, because I know we got a paper one last week. Yes, I have an electronic version of that that I could also share with council so that you just have it in your, have it in your email. But it has all the dates. But yeah, Athens Music Festival, actually, what's the, Sam?
The Athens Arts and Music Festival is slated for August 15, 2020.
Mayor?
There are several, it'll be in the next tranche of events. The BRIC criteria is not on your agenda tonight, but that will come up in the next round as well.
Glad to hear that's happening again.
You know, and thinking that through, to have them all come before council in one evening would make for a very long evening, although we've been through this before with council vetting the different events on Court Street. Again, I want to echo the importance of us moving to a different way of doing, having the meetings, conducting the meetings with all the event organizers, because I think it's a smart way to move things forward earlier in the year, not only for council to get through it and have the citizens kind of understand those who are watching, but also we can continue to push it out so people know what's going on during the summer. Plus, it gives, you know, Convention Visitors Bureau, the A-News, the Athens Messenger enough time to where they know what's going on and can put together an entire slate, which would be beneficial for everybody to where people know what's going on all summer long.
Member Crowell?
Thank you. Discussion that I had with Mr. Thompson, who's in the audience tonight about doing this, and I appreciate all the work that is being done to present these in multiple pieces, but I don't think they all have to be done in, you know, in one, or even two or three, right? But having this is really helpful for those of us thinking about it and those people who want to do an event, they can begin to see that schedule and say, well, this is, this is when I can do it and this is when I can't do it. So just having these documentation, whether we do them all in large chunks or not, I think is a real progress, so I appreciate, appreciate the work the city and Peter have done.
Yeah, well, I would say, I would say definitely also, when you think about the business owners, you know, that thinking of staffing and stocking levels, you know, based on what's happening with these, because, you know, some businesses are going to do really well with the closure and some won't, so they can adjust accordingly based on what their, what their historical data has been. And knowing that sooner is always better. Okay. So I do want to thank the promoters that did show up tonight. I guess it wasn't imperative, but I'm glad you're here, because if you weren't here, we probably would have had 20 questions for you. Okay.
Question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there a cutoff date for people who want to have these type of events? I mean, does the city say, listen, if we don't get your information in by such and such a date, just forget it, try us again next year?
Not, not this year, is my understanding, but I believe next year as we continue. So this was, you know, this is kind of the first, first time that they've really tried to bring people together and get this stuff buttoned up a lot sooner than later. And so, I believe that, you know, and I, go ahead, I'm not going to speak for administration, let's have them do it for themselves.
Some of you may remember that there was an event last year that was one of our traditional events that took way too long to get things together and before council, and that's when the conversation started in terms of having all event organizers in the front conference room, at the table, looking at the same calendar, so everyone's speaking the same language. The Uptown Business Association was also there, so Ayuba was at the table and understanding what was going on. This year, since it's new, we're going to work through it, but we're likely not going to find it acceptable to where, you know, less than 60 days out, all of a sudden, something is coming at us for a street closure this year. But next year, there'll be a hard line in the sand to where, here's the way it's going to work. If you're in and you follow these guidelines and you get it in within said timeframe, to where council can have it, whether we go through, as council member Crowell was saying, whether it's in tranches of, you know, three or two, not one big one, but to where it's manageable from a scheduling standpoint, then once that's done, it's done.
All right, thank you. Okay, second bullet point that I have tonight on transportation is an ODOT resurfacing project. And this is, once again, I was thinking about this, how many construction projects can ODOT have on US 33 and US 50 between bridge paintings and everything else, but they're doing some more work within our city limits. This is a paving project, which is on both 33 and 50 from Richland Avenue, and it's over the bridge over, over the Hocking River. It's actually, it begins at the Bike Way Underpass, which I thought was, was an interesting way to say this, which is the same bridge that goes over the Hocking River. But this is an LPA, so once again, ODOT is just looking for us to sign off on this. They're going to do 100% of the work, checking with Director Hetty at EPW. He didn't have a timeframe of exactly when this was happening, but this is, this is a, looks like a pretty big paving project that will be coming here this year. Yes?
And is it fair to assume that they will again assume 100% of the costs?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's basically these, these LPA agreements, that's, they're just, they just need the legislation in place so that we can, then it allows them to move forward and do the work.
Thank you, Matt, so it's scheduled for June 2020?
Oh, nice, okay. June 2020 is the schedule, so.
Thanks.
It's nice. School will be out.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions elsewhere?
If not, we'll move on to Committee of the Whole. The first item is the Southeast Ohio History Center, and the Director, or the Director Emeritus, Tom O'Grady, has submitted a request for council to send a letter of support for their capital campaign request to the state of Ohio, and they are asking for $600,000 in the budget to work on the roof and also restore the masonry. And I believe, Chris, Councilmember Fall received a copy of that letter?
Thank you. Yes, this is just a general asking for support, which we do with a lot of different nonprofits in the city. This particular one has a lot of input and impact because it is in this general uptown area and on the amazing history center that they are developing within the uptown area. Thank you.
That's it?
It's a letter that we will all support, right? All of us? And to go forward with the capital budget. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. If none, then we'll move forward with the letter on behalf of City Council next week then. The next item is the Bailey's Trail system, and council members might recall that there was an earlier resolution in support of Bailey's. Thank you, Councilmember Kotzis. He's been very strict about removing himself from these discussions. An early resolution with council supporting the concept of Bailey's Trail. And then, in December, there was Ordinance 11019 that was authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with, for support, providing financial support from the city using the transient guest tax. There has been discussion with, at the county commissioners' meeting regarding the project. There has also been discussion at the Port Authority. City Council did receive a letter from the Executive Director of the Economic Development Council stating that the Port Authority was tabling their decision to move forward with bond, given some of the financial information that they thought that they needed in addition to that. And the county commissioners also have not taken a vote on this, and so, at the request of the mayor, we're bringing forward this tonight for discussion. I do have, you did report that the ORCA, the Recreation Council, did agree today, I believe, to, for hiring an executive director for the position, but.
We did rural action, who received a, an ARC grant, said that they would be able to cover the salary for an executive director for the first year of this, which is solely needed, you know, because there's ORCA, which, you know, is just the board members, but there's nobody who can act as that steward to move things forward, everything from seeking other funding to promoting the Bailey Trail system, to which, as I understand it, 14 miles have already been built to this point in time, give or take 14 miles, to include an adaptive trail that's there. So there is programming that could start on that 14 miles of the soon-to-be 88 miles of mountain biking trail. So ORCA did vote to use the monies coming, for the grant money coming through rural action, to fund that executive director to get things going. It'll be a full-time position, and that person has a full plate, everything from having some, a level of oversight, at least the conversations that took place at ORCA, having oversight over the revenue that will be generated at the trailheads themselves, again, to the other items that I have indicated to council tonight. So it was a fruitful ORCA meeting earlier today. Seth Brown from Quantified Ventures was there to give at least some updates on different options for the funding. One of the things that I am going to request of council is, if you look carefully at the agreement, and in particular, under Exhibit A, Section 4, and under Section 4 has the statement for withdrawal, that is what has really created a roadblock or a logjam in moving this project forward for those who have already agreed to be funders, which at this point is the city of Athens. And hopefully, it'll free things up for the county commissioners, although I cannot speak for them. And that being to request that council consider amending Section 4, the withdrawal comment, to where it would leave, "Any members may withdraw from ORCA upon 90 days' written notice to each of the other members." And striking the remaining sentence in there, which is, "Withdrawal will be final after the 90th day, comma, except that. All obligations, financial or otherwise, to ORCA assumed by the member prior to the submitting of the notice of intent to withdraw should continue until the end of ORCA's then-current fiscal year." Which is basically saying that whoever decides to opt out, if you choose to opt out, you also are opting out of any financial commitment to the Bailey itself.
Open it up for questions. Councilmember Crowell?
Just would like to note that in addition to the Section 4 and Exhibit A, there is also in the agreement itself, a statement that all parties agree, and any party may terminate this agreement in accordance with Section 4 of Exhibit A. Both of those would have to be removed.
Councilmember Reisner?
Excuse me? So you're asking that we amend the ordinance by dropping that section out completely?
Well, you're not amending the ordinance, you're amending the agreement.
The attached.
Exhibit A. The ordinance doesn't speak to the 90 days.
No.
Opt-out.
No, but it does use Exhibit A as, as reference to.
It does.
Yes, so.
So what would take the place of that, then, if that is removed from Exhibit A?
Well, I mean, there's, there's several options, I would imagine. I mean, the most straightforward would be to completely strike Section 4, or leave the first sentence in Section 4, which would basically state that the, that you can opt out of being a member of ORCA, but you're still going to be paying the bond, paying down on the bond that you entered into to begin with. It would be like going to a bank and asking the bank for a loan for X amount of money, but please also put on a clause to where, after I receive that money and start using it for whatever, that I can opt out after 90 days and not pay back anything further on that. Simplified way to put it.
Councilmember Grace?
I, my feeling was that it was important for the city to be able to opt out, because it's not typical that we enter into 20-year agreements to financially support projects outside the city limits, and that there are some, some concerns as to our, our long-term financial health and revenue for the city. And so, so that, just voicing my concern, like, it was important to me that the city not be really the only entity on the hook for the bond. And at this point, no one else has, has signed up other than the city. So because our, our ordinance, what we passed last December, is contingent upon the county also making a commitment, and the county has not yet done that, I am not sure why the city should make changes at this point if, if the county is not also willing or going, going to come up with, with what is perceived as their share of funding. And I've also, I know that several individuals have put forward a case for there to be some state funding in the state budget, and I, if that comes through, that would also change the financial needs of the project. So I'm wondering why it's important for the city to, to change terms at this point when no one else, like, when other parts of, of the deal are in flux?
Well, a couple of things, if I may. This agreement and the Exhibit A applies to both the city and the county. If we move this to show that we're willing to free up the logjam that has gotten in the way, then this reverts back to the county. The county still has to make a decision. They could still sit there and go, no, we're not voting for this, under those same terms to where we too cannot opt out. We are, we are committed to this in the long run because of the economic impact that this will have on the region, to the county, to the city, positive economic impact. So that's, that's one thing with this unto itself.
So your supposition, or the idea is that if, if the city says, we're in full-on, no, no backing out, no getting out for 20 years, that's going to make the county more likely? Or?
Might make them less.
I, I think that if, if the city's share of the funding is contingent on the county, that the county needs to make a decision. And until they do, or until we know what's happening with the state capital funding, then I, I'm not sure that it, it makes sense for us to change.
Councilmember Fall?
I would like to take team on, Councilmember Grace. First, there is the, the money that's been asked by Jay Edwards of the Capital Campaign. Hopefully, they're, he's more successful than Debbie Phillips was. Well, she was a Democrat. Right, sorry, I'm off. However, I think that there's multiple steps that has to go through in order to look at this again. I'm not very, I'm not a real cheerleader. I'm looking at it again, because there were certain things that were required for, for several council members to vote on this. And if you're now asking us to remove those things that we want to support, but you, you want to remove the things that makes the city whole in case Bailey's collapses, or make the city whole again with other ORCA and those sort of things that makes the whole Bailey's collapse. I think that, because the county and other organizations have said, wait a minute, we are not going to go through with this, does not make the sense that the city should, oh, well, we're going to just say whatever, even though the other entities want to stop and have a timeout. So I think that's what this whole thing says, is a timeout for looking at, being able to go through with this.
Councilmember Reisner?
In the original ordinance, there's a clause that says if the county doesn't come through, the city is not on the hook for anything. We don't do anything. Does the county have a similar clause in whatever resolution they're going to put forward to say that if the city doesn't come through, they won't come through? In other words, the same type of ordinance as we have, though, of course, commissioners don't pass ordinances, they don't have a legislative authority.
Well, current, I hear what you're saying. But likely not, because council has already acted in the affirmative towards going forward. What would they be saying that we haven't done?
Well, so far, they haven't done anything. I mean, back in, you know, back, back, way back, you know, turn the way back machine, Chairman, and we go back to December, what was coming out of the county was. and we go back to December, what was coming out of the county was, hey, city, you got to move forward on this. You guys take a long time, you have to go through readings, you have to go through meetings, you have to have hearings. We're a county, one meeting, and we can have this thing done, just like that. Okay? We do everything, we get all our ducks in a row, we have the right ordinance, we put everything together, we have expert witnesses, they all come forward, we have hearings, we have talks, we have more hearings, we have more talks, it's in the newspapers, it's everywhere. We do everything we're supposed to do, we get it done. Come Tuesday, the next week, the commissioners do nothing. They say, I need more information. Well, what more information do you need? It's already there. Okay? So as everybody always says when they come up here and talk about Baileys, I'm for the project, but what I don't like is there seems to be no reciprocity from the county for us. I'd like to see some earnest of intent from them, some resolution, some statement that says, city, if you do this, I promise you, we will pass a resolution in support of Baileys, and we will go out and get a bond. I'd like to see that. Is that too much to ask from them?
It's not. It's not, but let's just take a step back. From what we're hearing from the Port Authority is to have a clause in there that's this 90-day opt-out, walk-away clause, and I'm off the hook, is that they're never going to fund it. They, I would imagine that most bond councils would look at something like that and go, that risk is huge-
Right.
-from someone who is administering a bond.
But my problem is not with the bond council or Orca, but my problem is even if we do that-
Yeah.
-and we please Orca, and the bond council says, hey, this is great, I just had this horrible feeling, the county's still going to say, no. I just don't see any enthusiasm on their side. Well, other than maybe one out of three. I'm not going to name names or anything, but-
I hear you.
I just don't see it.
I think the 90 days is one thing. I do want to return to the capital budget. I was involved, albeit on a conference call, in to those who were in attendance with Representative Edwards, talking about the possibility of getting the Baileys into the Bailey Trail system, into the capital budget. It was a good meeting. It seems to me that every time I'm involved in a capital budget conversation, it's always a good meeting. It has proven me wrong twice before on the Armory, the first time trying to get the Armory in for $900 and some-odd thousand dollars, and that went nowhere, albeit I was creating relationships with, you know, both the representative as well as the state senator. And then to put it in again to the last capital budget at a much reduced price alongside two other Armories, the one in Chillicothe and the one in Marietta, both of those got funded, where our ask was $250,000, and again, we didn't receive any funding from that. I'm not going to read the tea leaves as to why we didn't get that funding under the previous administration, but the ask is going to be $3.6 million to go towards Bailey Trail creation. Keep this in mind as well, though, council, is the biennium, as I understand it, that money won't be released until 2020. It's not like that money is going to be there right away. It's not. And meanwhile, funding is still needed for the Bailey. I have, I don't know if Seth Brown wants to speak to this at all or not, but I did have a conversation with Seth Brown from Quantified Ventures. If we're successful getting, say, a million dollars, you know, into the governor's portion of the capital budget, which is, as I understand it, is the portion of the budget that is the request is going to go forward to through Representative Edwards, is that some adjustments, you know, can be made to either the length of time in which we're paying, or something along those lines, if there's a million dollars that's going to go toward, if, if, council, keep that in mind, it's a big if, if a million dollars, you know, better yet, $3.6 million goes towards the trail construction. But that's such a moving target, you know? Not that I've been at this forever, but I've certainly been at the table trying to figure out how we can get in, get something for the city into that capital budget, and it's not easy.
When you were at that meeting, was any information shared about when the decisions would be made, or when we might find out about whether or not we get the money for the trail?
No, it wasn't. It takes time, though, as you can imagine, because there are, you know, 88 other counties, you know, that are also vying to get things into the capital budget, multiply that by the number of municipalities, there are lots of asks, because that's typical. I don't know.
Do you know if- Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember Crowell. Do you know if any of the other counties through which the trail would cross are advocating for it as well?
Well, the trail, the 88 miles of this particular trail is only in Athens County.
Oh, excuse me. Okay.
There were letters of support for the capital budget request that have come from the village of Chansey, from the city of Nelsonville, from, I wrote a letter of support for this, as well as the county commissioners, I believe, wrote a letter of support. It was just recommended, I brought forward to Orca this morning, that there should also be a Orca, it's late, but hopefully it can get before the governor at some point, coming from Orca as well, the council of governments in support of funding through the capital budget.
So I think what we'll do now, this is good to have a background information and the updates, if we have any comments that are specific to what's on the agenda tonight. So that will be the request to amend, 11019, by removing that one clause. Seth, did you want to speak?
Sure.
If you could come up, name, address, and the group that you represent, if you could announce that and sign in.
Seth Brown, Quantified Ventures is the group I represent, which is a company in Washington, DC, which is where I live. I live in Washington, DC. To speak to what the mayor is recommending in terms of amending the ordinance, it is to send a signal of the city's commitment. It is not changing how the deal would be structured, it's not putting debt on the balance sheet, it's not doing any of the things that we were worried about during the debate last December, because those amendments are already in there. If there was ever a change to the financial obligation to the city, it would have to come back to city council. If there was ever a circumstance to where, in the case of any sort of financial change, and there was an obligation that was left to the city, it would have to come back to city council. The second point is that this isn't in agreement with some third-party stranger who you don't know. This is the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, of which you have a representative on the committee, and you also have a representative on the board, which is Mayor Patterson. And so this is one of three of the board members who this agreement is being entered into. So if there was a circumstance of which philanthropic, or a capital budget, or an operation budget came down and changed the obligation of what needs to be funded, there are people in place to bring something back to council for that change, and that's important to keep in mind. What this is, is this is sending the signal that you've already sent. You must pass unanimously a 20-year obligation, a 20-year commitment in this contract. I get you guys were all in. You wouldn't have passed that if that wasn't, you know, you were willing to be a part of that. What this is sending the signal is removing the language that would give fear to someone who is lending money to the organization, and that's it. And how that money is going to be lent is dependent upon the county, as we've all talked about, and the county may move forward and they may not, that's totally the prerogative. If they don't move forward, it completely changes what the city's obligation is, as written in the amendment. But this puts our best foot forward. It takes away an argument, which I think is a moot point, because you wouldn't have passed this if you weren't in it for the long haul. And if there ever was a circumstance in the future that required a change, you have that pat forward with the representative of Orca and the fact that the city council can amend things.
Thanks.
Any questions for me?
Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you for that. As a newer council member, and just getting caught up on some of the background information that we're sharing here, you say that this isn't a fundamental change.
Correct.
But what I'm hearing is it is, because what was agreed to before allowed for this opportunity to back out. What we're proposing, what we're presenting with tonight removes that opportunity.
So first off, I think in a scenario where you are going to be quote-unquote backing out, there would be circumstances with the council of governments that would make it to where the obligation was no longer in the city's interest, or was no longer required by the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. Both of those paths still exist, because this is not debt on your balance sheet, it's a general obligation bond that you are entirely beholden to repay, and if not, you're going to, you know, whatever the bankruptcy laws are for how general obligation bonds are. This is a 20-year contract of which you are entering, of which the agreement you're entering into is with an organization that is an actor that is local to your community.
Any other questions?
Which doesn't really answer her whole question. I think that what we have put forward as the city, what we are comfortable with is being able to say, because other entities are in this whole discussion, whether we need to be able to back out because, one, management isn't doing right, development isn't doing right, or whatever sort of things other entities decide to pull out. I think that is what council wanted, was a clause to protect the city budget, and to protect the city from having to put forward money that doesn't make sense for a project that is going to the north or waylaid. And I think that that's essential to look at, because we've already seen from the county commissioners, a, oh, we're going to back away, or we're going to do whatever they're doing. And then the city is like, oh, well, the city needs to step up even more, because the county, we need to, do you understand any, you know, I think that that is a really important point to understand, is that when the other partners are backing away, we do not want to step up even more.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you. And I think to Councilmember Reisner's point, there's a lot to love about this project. I think it's the long-term commitment that makes us nervous. I believe there was a presentation done previously that talked about the financial situation that we're in right now, which makes it very feasible, given the revenue that we're getting from the new gas tax, and how that we're okay as far as supporting it right now, but we don't know what we're going to look like 10 years from now, 15 years from now. And so I think that's what makes us nervous, is the long-term commitment. So I don't know how you resolve that.
Yes. Councilmember Grace.
To what Member Smedley was saying, it was my understanding, when we passed this agreement in December, that having this clause in there protected the city in terms of unforeseen financial hardship. Perhaps we are restricted in our ability to collect income tax from nonresidents, or other changes that may happen at the state level that we have no control over in terms of our revenue. And if things were to change, and there is not a dramatic increase in the transient gas tax, for whatever reason, that the city has the ability to say, no, we are not permanently on the hook for this for 20 years, and that, because we don't necessarily know what our finances are going to be able to bear 20 years from now. And so it wasn't just a, if, you know, an organizational or a structural thing, but it was protection for the city being able to meet the financial obligations that we absolutely have to meet within our borders.
Well, I guess the one thing I would say is that the intent of this was to have a long-term annual commitment, of which someone could know that that money was coming in, and therefore borrow a lot of money upfront to fund the construction, and then, you know, have it set aside for operations and maintenance, knowing that that money would be coming in while the trail was able to become self-sufficient with revenues. And if there is a very, very strong understanding that that is not guaranteed, and that there is a high likelihood that the city is not going to be able to be there for the long haul, that person would not be either willing to provide that money, or it would be an extremely risky thing to do. And so we're trying to just send a signal that, like, it is a long-term commitment that we are a part of. That's the line we're trying to work.
And I think that may be the dilemma that the Port Authority has said, without a binding, there has to be a binding contractual commitment, at least as long as the term of the bonds. So that's the, yeah.
And I think that would be the concern for any bond, anybody issuing a bond-
Likely so.
-is saying the exact same thing.
Sure. Councilmember Crowell.
I think we knew that in December. You know, I think that we are a little bit in the Wayback Machine-
Thank you.
-in that, you know, there was some skepticism. I fully appreciate that Mr. Brown has full confidence in the success of this project, and the success of Orca, and not the mismanagement of funds, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But council was not sure about this until the clause was put in that we could get out of it, right? Now we're back at that point, and at that point, somebody should have said, hey, no bond council is ever going to give you money if you have that clause in there.
Councilmember Crowell, the amendments were not on that, actually. The amendments were twofold. The amendments were on if there's a financial obligation placed on the city, what happens? And I don't know the exact word for word. And then the other amendment was on the evaluation, and what the evaluation would show. That was originally in there, even when it was tabled, because it was copied from the council of governments agreement withdrawal section, and that was in the original amendment.
But so, okay, thank you for that clarification. Even so, didn't we know that a bond, that no one's going to float that bond with that clause in there?
Yeah, we're trying to, what we're trying to do is fund something jointly, right? So using a port authority, or potentially having the county just issue it and be reimbursed from the city, we're trying to issue something together, in part, because if you, in the county, issue bonds separately, the way that that works is that it can only be used for construction, and there's specific rules on how that can be utilized, whereas we're trying to have something where there's staff and operations and support, so that the economic benefits associated with the trail can be realized, but they're also be funded jointly. And the way that we're trying to go about that is through multi-year contracts, which inherently have what we call appropriation risk, which is the idea that a city council in 10 years from now has a change of priorities, or there's some macroeconomic conditions that make it to where that doesn't happen. And what we're trying to send is the really strong signal that that's not a threat.
Okay, we're going to take these two comments, Grace's, Fall's, and we're going to wrap up. We've been talking for at least half hour, 35 minutes, and I value everyone's contributions to it, but I'm not sure. We'll see what the two closing statements are here, keep them short, and maybe we'll come to some agreement. But right now, I think we've not moved forward particularly. Councilmember Fall.
I think the key is that most of the time, city council funds projects. We get the project, and it's a physical thing. We do not, especially in this sort of project, do management and administration. And the management and the administration of this project seems to be a high number value, when you start looking at the numbers. And I think that that's one of the problems that I hear on council, is we like the trail, I would be more than happy to put more money towards a trail, physical entity. However, going and funding the administration, and, you know, whatever is going forward with Orca and stuff, is different. And so I think that when council asks for money, we fund a sewage treatment plant. That's ours. We get that. It's a piece of property that we can own. And however, Baileys presents council in a different light. I think that if it was separated- I think that if it was separated into, you know, physical and management and administration, that would be different, then we could have a different council discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Grace?
Hi, I just wanted to return to Member Crowell's statement that, I mean, I am not an expert in finances or bond procurement, but when I read through this and I thought, well, Orca as an entity has no assets. So why is anyone going to issue a bond to Orca? And so then I asked in previous meetings, who is going to be on the hook financially for the, the bonds? If, if the city is a member of Orca, but Orca doesn't have any means to pay, it, it would come back to the city. And, and I think that is, that is why it was important to have that, that the city had the, something had to come back to council before bonds could be issued, and also that the city has the ability to leave and to not have that ongoing financial commitment. And that, that was, that was a part of my concern previously, and I asked, you know, and so I, I feel like, as Member Crowell said, those who, who were involved in the planning and organization of this, who assured us, the city will have the option to leave. You pay your financial commitments through that year, but then you can leave, should have known very well that then if, if that is the term, no one is going to issue bonds. And as it happens, that, that is, that's true. That's where we are. And so now we're being asked to remove that escape clause, remove that option of, of leaving in order to be financially responsible for the payment of those bonds. And so as, I, I think, I think this could have all been very clear long ago. And so that, that is my, my take on this.
Well, I thank everybody for the comments. Thank you, Seth, for being here and the mayor making the presentation. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda item.
Well, is this, will this go on to the agenda for council?
I'm not sure that there is consensus to put that on as an amendment to be for consideration.
Who is it up to?
Well, it's usually, we, usually what happens is if something is of general assent, like the agreement letter, then that would move forward, the agreement letter, because there's consensus. You don't, you can't take a vote on a committee meeting night.
Right.
And I don't know that there's any one council person that is, I mean, that could come forward too, I suppose, if an individual council member would want to come forward to amend it. But that's where we are right now, and I don't think there are any other decisions that can be made at a committee meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the climate emergency resolution.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Next week, I would like to put forward a climate emergency endorsement for the city of Athens. I think that it's been, we've been pussyfooting around a lot of the things that we've been discussing about climate emergency, and so I would like to put this into code and to start a process of pushing through ordinances and policy associated with the climate emergency. Thank you.
And if we can have, well, give an opportunity for council members to make any comments or answer, ask questions about it.
Just a quick question. Are you going to circulate a resolution around it so we could all sort of?
Right. I have, I have, I put the resolution around first.
It's on the shared agendas.
Yes.
It's on the Google Drive.
You actually.
Well, I don't see it at home.
Well, no, you actually did an amendment, and so, yes, please. It's been around and I've already updated it and put it out, which said less snarky things that I did on the first thing. But basically, this is a call to arms about climate and climate change, which is not climate change, is a climate emergency, and putting our, everything, our full resolution and energy towards addressing this issue, which has to do with community resilience, with the, the mayor has done a lot of resilience projects going forward. So this is a overall arching story that we're going to push forward.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Crowell?
Just quickly, I wanted to note that the Ohio University is hosting a challenging dialogue series, and there will be a New York Times reporter there talking about how climate change is covered, Lisa Friedman, on February 11th at 7:00 PM.
And this is what I want, people bringing information to us.
Councilmember Claude Fetter?
I think that this proposal is very well timed, considering that Wednesday, April 22nd, is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and that if we as a community are going to get serious about addressing climate change, that it makes very good sense to do it this year and get some sustainability ordinance passed before that 50th anniversary.
So if people, if folks would, please take a look at it. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to present it to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. I think that was a question that the mayor had.
It is.
Yeah.
I think that this is something that should come up through the Sustainability Commission.
They've seen it.
They have seen it?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And there might be, there are a few other, be it resolved on meetings, that might be clarified a little bit.
I sent it out to the various committees and commissions, since sustainability and thus, so.
Have they responded?
Councilmember Snedley has a comment, and then the mayor responding back again.
Thank you. I'm trying to find it. I believe there were some benchmarks we were committing to, yes, by 2030, in terms of our carbon emissions, and was just curious where those came from and how feasible they may be. But I also understand there's a report that's supposed to come out as a result of this.
Right. I will put the citations with it when it comes forward with the various, and I will send those out. This, a lot of this comes from the new, the new Green Deal, Green New Deal, whichever that one is, Green New Deal. Anyway, and other information, also the mayor's partnership for, for the climate and the state partnership with climate also.
Mayor Patterson?
Is this a one or a three reading resolution?
One.
Any other questions or comments? Please, if you forward any kind of comments that you have to Councilmember Fall as she gets the draft ready on this, that would be a help. Okay, thank you. Next, we have information on stormwater service charges, and part of that involves a position of an environmental coordinator, and I believe Councilmember Crowell is going to speak to this.
Thank you, President Nysli.
And Councilmember Grace, also, yes. Both of you. Excuse me.
Tag team.
Oh, the rate increase first, okay. Thank you.
Rate increases first, okay. I thought it would be going in the other order, but the Service Safety Director has, in, in working with our, our city engineer, has put forward a request to increase the storm sewer fee that is, is paid throughout the city. And currently, the, the stormwater fees are $2 per month for all residential users, and it's currently $4 per month for commercial users. And the requested increase is a $1 increase for residential users and a $2 per month increase for commercial and non-industrial, or commercial industrial customers. So the total, the new fees would be, excuse me, $3 per month for all residential and $6 per month for the commercial users. And this again is the stormwater fee, and we have had a stormwater fee in the city of Athens for some time, and this rate has, has not changed for 10 years. And I, my, my one concern with this is, is that council is, is being asked to bring forward multiple rate changes. We, we've had a couple of sewer rate increases, and then this is, is a storm sewer increase. And we anticipate a, an overhaul to our garbage contract and an upcoming garbage rate increase, and especially having, because to, to our residents, those who live in the city, all of, all of these things come on one bill. To, to different departments, different individuals working in the city, they're seen as separate because they, they fund separate things. But, but to our residents, this is, this is one bill that sort of keeps increasing. And, and I, I would much prefer a more coordinated plan, or, you know, that, that we could present to the residents sort of at one time and put forward the reasons and, instead of feeling like we're repeatedly bringing up different rate changes. So that, that is my, my one concern with, with this proposed increase, even it is, it is not a large increase, but I, I have been in communication with different residents who have, have brought up the phrase being nickelled and dimed. And I know when, when your, your utility bills or different obligations that you have to pay just kind of keep steadily increasing, it, it certainly does feel that way. And with that, I will say, our, our water, sewer, and garbage rates are actually quite low compared to many other municipalities. And, and I do think that, that there is a, a good cause for this, but, but I would request, and I, I know it's not easy, because it's, as I, as I said earlier, it's, it's different needs, different things within the city, but it, I believe it would be of service to council members as well as to our residents to have a sort of, a more coordinated plan that, that could be looked at at one time, so.
Yes. Councilmember Reisner?
What's the justification for?
That's Sam's part. That's why I thought he was going to go first.
Now, part two, okay.
Shall I?
Might as well.
Okay. The Service Safety Director would like to staff a new position at the, at the, at the city called environmental coordinator. In the past, the person responsible, the city has paid the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District on a contract for Abbott Stevenson to, to basically administer the city's MS4, that's our municipal separate stormwater system. And Service Safety Director Stone would like to bring that into the city's responsibilities instead of contracting it out, basically. And so part of this, the increase that, that Member Grace introduced would pay for this position, it would be a .8 FTE out of 755 fund, and a .1 from 750 and a .1 from 740, so combining a couple of different things. It's a non-union job, non-supervisory administrator position, probably about the middle of the pay grades. He's not quite sure yet where it'll be exactly. And as I said, the primary role of the position will be to administer the municipal, the MS4 program, specifically the permit for stormwater pollution prevention. But Service Safety Director Stone also sees the possibility to sort of do some, some backup in terms of responsibilities for the city. He would like this environmental coordinator to also back up the lab technicians at the city laboratory, and this would be overseeing some of the things in the, in the stormwater or in the sewage treatment plant, the fats, the greases, industrial pre-treatment, and assisting the wastewater treatment manager with the biosolids management, the sludge that we produce in the city, and then other environmental education efforts, as, as Ms. Stevenson used to do for the Soil, Water, and Conservation District. She has retired. That is one of the reasons for this change. And so that is what the money is going to go to, as proposed by the city. Am I have that right, mayor?
You do have that absolutely correct.
And as I understand the position, the contractual arrangement with Soil and Water Conservation runs through end of April or beginning of March?
May, I believe.
May, was what I thought we were told in the finance.
I was told we'd like to have someone in, because our annual reports are due April 1st.
There's a gentleman in the, in the, has taken over for Abbott currently, Joe, I believe, but he may, but he, that must be just up until May 30th.
Okay. And, and we do have some reports due, it's sounding like also. Okay. Member Crowell, do you happen to know, or does our, our auditor or mayor know, how much is that contract?
$40,000, I believe, annually.
So moving forward, we, we would not have that expense anymore.
That's correct. And additional duties that I think are really needed, and in particular, if you look at the fats, oils, and grease program of getting out and monitoring what enters into our, our sewer or sometimes storm system with grease trap overflows and whatnot, but that's what this person's job would be to go around to restaurants and other establishes, establishments that produce a lot of fat, oil, and grease. But then the other things that Sam had mentioned that would fall under this person's job title, 80%, .8 FTE would come from storm, 10 from water, 10 from sewer. And again, we have our current employees who work down at the water and sewer lab, wastewater lab, you know, they have been with the city for, for a long time. And by having someone in this role, they understand how to operate the lab. Both of our lab operators know each other's jobs and, and often, you know, do both those jobs if someone is away or whatever. And this would have a third person understand how to operate the lab equipment on the water and the wastewater side. Something else, just to mention to council, it's been 10 years since this rate has increased. And so if you look at, at material costs, I guess a good point of reference would be the most recent storm tunnel, which was, was a, I believe it was a single-course block brick storm tunnel in front of the Stuart McDonald Building, that when we had our camera, actually a rented camera, a creeper, creeper camera, to go through that storm tunnel and see what the condition was like, that the walls were failing inside that particular thing, you know, and so we've got aging infrastructure as well, yet the cost of materials haven't stayed flat over the past 10 years. If anything, they have gone up. And so that's part of this equation, too. It's basically keeping up with inflation that we see for materials. In reality, when you think about things like water, wastewater, and sewer, storm, rather, what you see in a lot of municipalities is you'll see annual increases in those rates to keep up with the cost of living with inflation. We don't do that in Athens. We haven't done anything like that for quite some time. So therefore, it's been 10 years since this rate has changed, and this is going up by a dollar for residents and $2 for industrial and retail. So that's what's before council. It would create a position, there would be, we would be directing that $40,000 under the current contract to that position, but also looking at what this would generate in council, I believe you have this in front of you already, the anticipated yield would be $207,000. be $207,000. So, it could fund that position, as well as making sure that we have the monies that we need to not just keep things repaired, but to constantly enhance and improve our storm water system. You know, the Columbus, or the, the Congress Street improvement, the sewer improvement, you know, there were laterals that were identified, and it's a good thing that there were lateral connections identified, because those, at the end of the day, could end up becoming a negative hit from EPA if all of a sudden they're identifying other materials that shouldn't be in the storm system on high water events.
Councilmember Fall, you had a question?
I think that the idea of an environmental coordinator is awesome, because anytime there's a, a job title that starts with environmental, right on. I'd like to see it go towards more green infrastructure, and we have already started that with the workover by the university and daylighting certain streams and doing those sort of things. And I think that with the, the climate emergency stuff that's going forward, it's looking at green infrastructure and being able to pull those in, and it's using, like our swales and our green, our, what are they called? I'll just call them swales. Being able to include all those sort of things with our green infrastructure, our sewer treatment, our storm water, and those sort of things. And so, I think that to go forward, we need to look at that green part of the infrastructure. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, auditor Heck, just one.
Sorry, if I could jump in just quick. The, you mentioned $207,000? I believe that's the total that would be brought in, that if council passes the rate change, that it is an increase of $69,000.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not a $207,000.
New revenue.
Yeah. The, the increase would be $69,000.
It's currently $138,000.
Auditor Heck.
My issue right now is only procedural with moving forward. We don't have a job description, and as far as, for me, the ability to use 80% of storm water money for a job that might only do 50% storm water work, I think should be clarified before we start this. When we had our meeting last week, I believe Andy said that the person, our consultant doing this right now spends about 20 hours a week doing this. So, I think, and possibly could be, and end up being, an 80-10-10 split, but we, we need to justify where we take that money from. And when the ordinance is passed, that goes into the staffing ordinance for the splits, for where we pay them from. So.
So, the job description will help.
Right. So, that, so we're not just guessing at, at the split, that we really have some concrete duties, and can look at them and weigh them for how that person's gonna be paid.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right? We'll look for a job description. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to finance and personnel. That's the chairperson is Councilmember Crowell, and then Councilmembers Reisner, Cos, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Nysli. First item on our agenda tonight is the CMI software upgrade. The city is in desperate need of new software to run all sorts of systems that the city utilizes, from our taxation payroll, accounts payable, this is from the auditor's office, utilities, human resources. They rely on this software, and it's desperately in need of an upgrade. We do have backups of this data that is required by law, so we do have to have a system that, that runs effectively. The proposed appropriation for this would be out of 580 funds, since it's citywide. The rough estimate, I believe, is about $175,000. Now, that also includes the next item on our agenda, which is a server for the auditor's office where this information sits. Auditor, would you like to add anything on the CMI software?
Sure. Just for a little more background for our council, the city of Athens has been with the CMI software company since 1985. And when I took office in 2004, well, in 2005, we upgraded the software system, and that's the last time we did it. So, it's been 14 years plus since we did that. And it's time now, and so, there are some other reasons that we're pushing forward with this. We've talked about it for a long time, but it's, it's, it's a large ticket, is the, well, several things. There are issues, there's so many changes in the tax law now, that we need to upgrade our software so that we can, so what we put in our system matches what's going on at the state level for the laws, which they're still changing, but they will have caught that up so that we don't have to do so much calculating by hand, and, which leaves us open to making more mistakes. The other reason is, in HR, there's a component in payroll for HR, and a few years ago, the city bought an outside software program to handle HR information and, for employees. And it hasn't worked out very well. And so, at this point, if we want to increase that module on our software, we would be better off to go ahead and upgrade the system and have that all taken care of. So, once I found out that the new HR director was all in favor of this, I think the last couple of people have been frustrated trying to work with the, the one that we've had. And a big issue come up with it today that we found out about, of information being sent to our insurance carriers, or it might have been Pers, whatever, that was wrong. And so, yeah, so, it, it's time to do all these upgrades, and as member Crowell said, the total is 174,500, actually. So, the finance part, which is the accounts payable mostly, is 60,000. The authority payroll is 51,000, and then the tax authority is 61,000. And so, I rounded those, but it does add up to that $175,000 ticket. Now, when we started getting the estimate, this included a new server, which hasn't been replaced in eight years, which means, you know, in server life, technology life, it's, it's outdated and needs to be replaced. Because utilities billing, which is also operated, they pay for their own software, but it operates through our server, is having issues because we don't have enough memory. And so, with the, the new, this new quote included a server. However, we would like to separate that and try to get that server in place as soon as possible. There's not enough memory. It takes them an hour and a half to run their bills to send out every week. If anybody else is on the system trying to use it, it slows it down even more. But even waiting till 4 o'clock when people are off to do it took them that long, and, and so, they're anxious to, to get a new server in there, which is sorely needed, because we are having issues in our, in our office, too, from things being slowed down because of the lack of memory. So, the thing is, so on that, we have money in our supply fund that we think we could move down to our, our capital, our 500s, our capital fund in the auditor's budget to pay for that. It should be less than $10,000, seven or eight is what I believe. And so, we, I, I would really like to get a decrease and increase in the auditor's budget to move that server replacement along. And then, as far as the upgrades for the software, you know, that can go, go through three readings, and it should, and not be implemented or started until about April, or something like that. So, we can only implement one at a time, or nobody in our office will be doing anything. So, we need to start with finance, because payroll has a component that is dependent on the finance system being upgraded, and, and then we'll go to tax. And hopefully get it all done by the end of this year, about nine months, all said and done. I do have information on that, how long they think it would take to install each, each application, and anything else anybody wants to know, or if you have questions right now.
Does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Smedley?
Thanks for that background information. You had mentioned you identified a line item that would be able to fund the server upgrade.
Yes.
Have you identified one yet for the software upgrade, and how that would be?
Yeah, that will need to come out of the cap fund, which is the 580 fund. So, our, our budget is in the general fund, 101, 102. So, it would be 580. 580, I don't know that we have our own cap lines in there, so we don't typically spend that much money. And then it would be out of the 500s for computer equipment, would be the specific account line.
And Councilmember Cos? Do you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay.
The, the server would be in your, live in your office?
It does.
And then, so you're in the police building, so then do you have a generator backup?
No. Or do we? Does the police department have a backup?
No.
Server, no. No, and, you know, that's another whole issue with the city server in City Hall that has enough room to house our information and back it up. However, we contacted the state auditor's office, and we have had IT audits when the state actually audited us, and asked them what, what the requirements would be for our backup, and just to put it simply, they like what we're doing. We have two backups, and one is a tape backup that we store across the street in the parking garage, and then, or we were, then we moved it to the basement of City Hall. And then the other one is on the cloud that we pay for through CMI, which is our software company. And so, we had a discussion today with one of the people who did, actually did our IT audit, just like three years ago, four years ago, maybe. And so, he explained, which is way over my head, I'll be honest, but I understand the gist of it. But if we do two cloud backups, if we get a cyber attack, ransomware, anything like that on our computer, it will all be in the cloud. And someone who has figured out how to tap that can probably do both. They, they would rather we had an off-site and a different type of backup, and there's different ways we can do that. But along with all of that information, and I could do more, I could read you my notes from today, is, you know, we're, we're just safer doing that. We, and our disaster recovery program goes hand in hand with that, which the whole city is supposed to have. But it's a big deal for us not to lose our, our information if there were a disaster uptown. Say our building caught fire, the electricity was out, and we weren't able to bring it, you know, come back up in a reasonable time. So, we have a whole program, and I carry a copy in my car. We have one, we store one somewhere else, and all fire safe, keys and all that. We worked out an agreement with the community center to go over there and use their computers. If the whole city is out, nobody's really gonna be expecting anything. If the crisis is in the uptown area, or our building, or just our two buildings, we, if we could go somewhere else to do that, the person who, and see, that's the other thing, we have an outside person who will install our server and be responsible for it, Harlan Company. And so, they, we've, we've got that in there, too, where they will come down here and install the equipment necessary to read that tape. That's, because there's no place else in the city that has that. Well, actually, court does a tape backup still, but I think they still do. But anyway, we would, they would have to do that, but we, we have that all worked out so that we can just go to another building that has electricity and computers and be able to bring our information back up. The biggest thing for me is really to get people paid. And so, the idea that we can do it that way and have a tape that's not corrupted, as opposed to the ransomware on the cloud, wherever cloud system it goes to, you know, if, if it's corrupted, you know, it won't, it would corrupt both of them.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that addition. Oh, Councilmember Grace.
I just have a, a question about the software. And this is something I've been thinking about with all of our different offices, and is, are there any points at which, or information points in the software that would be things that the public would want to access, or be able to access, as far as individual, an individual wanting to be able to, say, log into a city system and check their tax bill, or things like that? And is, would that be an option? And is that something?
I don't think that's an option available now, but that's probably one of the main reasons for the HR program to be incorporated, so that employees can go in. I know you has that, and, and look at, it, it never actually was up and running in the other software that was purchased. But the, the state auditors, we have so much confidential information in our system, in particular in, in the tax department. Everything we have in there is, is by law confidential. However, people would be surprised if they knew how much information we have. We have everybody's bank account numbers, social security numbers, social security numbers for their spouse, and whoever might be on their life insurance beneficiary, and things like that. And so, there's just a lot more than people realize that would be dangerous if it, if it was compromised. And so, we have talked about the tax thing, though, ways to put certain information out there. The thing is, we can't really have them logging into our, our software. It would have to be a, a separate application.
That's what I was wondering about, just at National League of Cities Conference. I attended some sessions that were talking about sort of electronic interfaces between city and the, the residents, and just things that make it easier for residents to, to access information or pay bills, do things like that through other, you know, internet or through an app. And so, I wondered if this particular software is, is designed to either interface and communicate with a, an application that, that, you know, so, so an individual could log in and pay their income tax bill, or online, or have that sort of electronic interface with the city, but without having access to the information they're not.
Right. We actually have that now, and we do have a program. I don't know if any of the actual financial, financial software programs have that. So, it's a separate program.
Can they talk to each other? Can they talk to each other, so that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's another thing that we have with the bank, and say, Ohio Business Gateway, where people can log in, and businesses can log in and pay their tax bills. That, we get an identified from the bank that we just, that just uploads into our system. And that would be the same thing for the HR component, if they go in, and it's not, my understanding is, it's not just to look up how many sick days you got, or vacation days, but you can put information, change your information, your address, whatever, and different things in there. But, you know, I could ask more about that. It would be nice to have a certain amount of information. Our financial reports and all that information are totally public records, so, and those are the requests we get, ask for the most.
And I, just before we make a large software purchase, that is hopefully going to serve the city for many years, thinking about what we want that software to be able to do.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you, yes, I've looked, we have looked at other software companies. The vendors are always at our conferences, and they contact me pretty regularly. And one issue I have is very few have a tax component. The tax software companies are separate, and from the past, we know that two companies don't interface well. They will tell you that they can, but they don't. And this happened in Utilities Building. They were, a previous employee was unhappy with CMI Utilities, and went to another software company for a time, and it was really, really difficult. They have now come back to CMI several years ago. And so, it's really hard to have different software companies handling everything. So, that's one thing about, and it appeared to me, when I was getting close, that it would cost us more. You get a better deal, the more you can get from one company, so.
Well, thank you for doing all this research. Okay.
All right, thank you. So, that covers our first two items under finance and personnel, the software, as well as the server. And the next item is staffing. We need to amend ordinance 0820, change some titles, and removal of positions within the arts, parks, and recreation department. Specifically, we need to change the title of Rec. Labor Supervisor to Parks Maintenance Division Manager. Director Moore of the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Department is reorganizing, proposing to reorganize the department, after her deputy director, Assistant Director Andrew Cheeky, joined the Service Safety Director, as Deputy Service Safety Director. Director Stone is looking at reorganizing her department. And she is proposing a few changes, including mentioning the Rec. Labor Supervisor to a Parks Maintenance Division Manager, removing the position of Assistant Director, as well as a Pool Manager, and creating the Facilities Operations Division Manager. And it's very important that we get this position approved, because she is quickly entering the pool season, and needs this Facilities Operations Manager to take over the duties that the Pool Manager and that Mr. Cheeky, as Assistant Director, used to do. She also is proposing that the Rec. Maintenance Specialist 1 and 2 positions be combined into Rec. Maintenance Specialist. This was technically approved by council in 2018, as part of a collective bargaining agreement, but we've never updated it in our staffing ordinance, so this is a technical matter. Let's see, we also had discussed the creation of a Program Division Manager, but that is still being looked at inside the department, so we are not going to consider that immediately. And I believe that is all that we have for the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Staffing. Any discussion on the staffing changes? Member Constance?
Yes, thank you. So, it's a combination of a couple different positions, because we will no longer have a set Pool Manager?
Correct.
Okay.
It is same pay grade, so the Facilities Operations Division Manager, which will take over the role of the Pool Manager, as well as the Assistant Director, will be at the same pay grade as the Assistant Director. So, there's no real change there in terms of the dollars necessary, although Mr. Cheeky has been, had been with APR for quite some time, and so, this new person will come in, and there'll probably be a few, some money saved in combining those. Anything else? Yes?
Thank you. Any other pay grade changes in the other changes that you mentioned?
I don't believe there are any pay grade changes. No.
Thanks.
Any others?
In terms of the changes to the positions that currently include the Pool Manager, when you say that it would also include the Assistant Director, the role on which Andrew Cheeky was working, is it just a portion of those responsibilities, or is it the entire Assistant Director position, plus the Pool Manager position?
Mayor, do you want to speak to that? Could you repeat the question?
I'm wondering if what's being considered from the Assistant Director position is just a portion of those responsibilities that maybe had to do with the pool, or is it the combination of those entire two positions into one?
If I'm remembering the conversation, that there is that other additional position, so that person is not going to be needing to take on Assistant Director and Pool Manager, but they'll be, the pool and that division, the operations will be split out, and then the programming will be later considered under another position.
Okay, thank you.
Just to point out, the Pool Manager is a seasonal position at the pool, and so, it's not two full-time positions combined into one, number one. And the Assistant Director has always supervised the Pool Manager, and so, part of, some of that would be on them anyway, managing the pool, basically, would be on that Assistant Director position.
Okay, thank you. No further comment. We'll move on to Fire Department contract. The Service Safety Director has reached a tentative agreement with the union, and the highlights are that this would be three-year term, with pay raises of 2% in the first year, 2.25% in the second year, and 2.5% in the third year. This ties, and there is a modification of the pay tables that decreases the step increase from step four to step five, and this is tied into lieutenant increases, the ties between the lieutenant increases and the firefighter increases. Healthcare adds an alternative option for Fire Department members to opt in to the HDHB HSA program. This may yield some long-term savings. There are some work rule improvements when it comes to sick leave. Their, the contract allows for structural, structured interviews for part of the lieutenant promotion process, rather than a straight written test, as in the past. This should lead to more well-rounded officers. And there are some changes in the fair share provisions. It puts us into compliance. And finally, there are a few other work rule modifications in the new contract in various areas. The Law Director was part of the negotiations, but is not with us tonight. The union membership rejected the first tentative agreement, mainly over some of the changes that the city wanted with that command pay, but they came back to the table and took out most of those changes, but gave less of a pay increase in return, and they ratified the second time. So, hopefully, this will be a contract that will be approved, and we can move forward with our firefighters for another few years. Any comments from council?
How many years' contract is it again?
Three. Mr. Member Constance?
Just want to thank the administration for working on this in-house, and Director Stone to have been able to negotiate this.
Mayor? I just want to point out that the team that went to the table on the administrative side, again, as you mentioned, Director Stone, the Law Director, and Leanna Woods was also on that team, so thank you, Auditor Heck, for having your deputy auditor, who was at the table throughout that process. So, it was completely negotiated within-house, which worked the last negotiation, and it worked this one as well.
Yes, Councilmember Farina?
I want to say thank you. One of the hardest things for council is to negotiate these contracts. And it's a balance between our role as a good financial and taxpayer services sort of person, but also making sure that the workers that do the hardest work in all of the city, you know, whether it's the police, the fire, and even the, you know, unrepresentative persons, making sure that they have the money, that they need to feel comfortable and have a living wage, and go forward to do the best things that they need to do for the city. And I think that we have a really good balance between the city administration, the city council, and a lot of our unions to be able to work forward with this. And I'm very encouraged by that. So, I want to say thank you to all the people who negotiated. It's a long process. It's a heartrending process sometimes, and it's also a process that can come out with really good things. So, I want to say thank you.
Yeah, Auditor Heck?
I wanted to thank the mayor for mentioning my new deputy auditor, Leanna Woods, allowing her to be on that committee. It's appointed by the mayor. It was a really good mix of those three people. Leanna has done payroll in my office for at least the last 12 years, and she understands their pay, their steps, command, shift, you know, all that kind of stuff. And I think she brought a lot to the table, and I know they worked really hard. And I think it's worth stating that we offered a bonus to them, if they would sign, agree and sign off on the first one, they didn't. And so, you know, Service Safety Director Stone took that back. I think in the end, he's pretty happy with what we did get. You know, it's a give and take. If they didn't want everything we wanted, then we, you know, don't give them everything they want. But, and I think he really did the best he could, holding the raises down, and that amount that it will cost the city is fairly minimal.
Mayor? Just real quick, I'd be remiss not to recognize the firefighters who were at the table fighting for, sitting there, fighting out fires, but negotiating. It was, it was good. I really appreciate the Service Safety Director and the work the committee did on this, and it's glad to have it done. Anything else for finance and personnel, Fire Department? That closes. Thank you.
Thanks. City and Safety Services Committee is next. It's our last one for the evening, and that's, Councilmember Grace is the chair, then Councilmembers Paul and Claude Filter.
There is just one item on our agenda today, and that is a request from our Engineering and Public Works Department, that we authorize an expenditure for, for the department to purchase a closed-circuit sewer television camera that would be used to inspect and evaluate our sewer lines. And as we know, we have aging infrastructure, and much of that infrastructure is under our streets. And it is very difficult to know exactly what's going on in these sewer lines under our streets. And so, they included the amount in their budget for this purchase. It's something that Mr. Hetty said was probably his top priority equipment for this, for this year, and, but because it is over $50,000, it needs to come through council for approval. And this, it is a, they're estimating $90,000. This is a big system that is powered and has essentially a camera system that can go quite a distance, and on wheels, that will allow it to navigate through different-sized sewer lines. And what we currently have can only go in some of our smallest sewer lines, and so, I learned more about sewer line cameras than I've ever thought about before in my life. And they're, currently, the city rents one when we have significant issues, and we pay a large, a large fee to rent them, and sometimes have to wait several days, which can then cause significant delays in getting streets opened up to traffic again, if we have some major issues. So, does anyone have any questions, or?
Could we rent ours out to other communities, Nelsonville, or, you know? We can make some money.
Recur?
Only kid.
Yeah. That might be something for consideration, but speaking with Mr. Hetty, he was estimating that this would be used on a very regular basis within the city. He said, if not every day, probably at least three days a week here, because they wouldn't use it only in emergency situations, or only when there's a problem. They would be proactive, going out, doing inspections. And something that has come up in conversations about our storm sewer, is there are more and more rules that the responsibility of keeping track of information and doing routine checks is being put on the city from the EPA. And keeping up with those would be part of that, hopefully, new position, that, but having this sewer line camera, we could see where storm water is coming in to the lines, when there are increases, where there could be problems, and hopefully, be able to keep our sewer lines in better repair. Yes, Member Claude Filter?
Perhaps you already mentioned this, Member Grace, but from what fund would this $90,000 come, and is there sufficient funds, are there sufficient funds in that account right now to cover this purchase?
Yeah, I don't know the actual fund. That's the Finance Committee. But I was informed by the Service Safety Director and also Mr. Hetty that this was budgeted for. It's already in the city budget, it's just council has to authorize the expenditure.
Okay.
Yes, you're nodding. Auditor Heck, is that correct?
The sewer fund is 750 in our system.
Okay. And any other questions from council? Yes?
Just a comment, you know, we just experienced this on the West Side of Shaffer. There was a, they had to close it down for sewer line repair. And I certainly appreciate the department's ability to repair that very quickly, given the amount of damage that was going on underground. And certainly, this is going to help us be more proactive and prevent things like that. that in the future, it seems.
I believe on that particular issue, we waited several days to get the crawler CCTV system in order to know exactly what the problem was, where it was, without digging up the entire street. And so, yes. Member Reisner?
Does this system also map the sewer lines? Does it know where it's at geographically?
The mayor is nodding yes. It has GPS in.
That's huge.
Yes, so.
Huge for ours. Unmapped area.
Exactly.
Because we do not know where most of our lines go.
Yes, so. It's a pretty fancy system that has interchangeable wheels for different sized lines and is a long cable.
It's kind of like a Mars rover only on Earth?
Yeah, yes. Yes, Mayor.
Can we tape it, put it online?
With our old one?
No, we should tape it and put it online.
Oh, sure.
No, seriously. Everybody wants to look at what is in our soap, you know, our sewer lines. Oh, my God. Everybody.
Worth pointing out.
How about trash TV?
I think College Street is a prime example of return on investment. Had we had this to creep through the sewer line, which was, which is very deep on College Street, it would have saved us in terms of having to dig to find, which means moving, you know, tens if not, well, hundreds if not thousands of tons of earth and brick and whatnot to find, only to have to return that back in the ground once it's done. This will spot find things so that we can target where the repair actually needs to be as opposed to having to probe to find, much like we did on College Street.
Any other questions? If not, that completes the service safety committee.
And we're adjourned at 8:52 PM. Thank you.